Let's go ahead and call our meeting to order. I think I'm supposed to officially do this and bring us to order for our August 22nd Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. If you all would please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move into our moment of silence, I just want to recognize, many of you may know or know of John Stevens. He passed on August 8th. He's been a member of our community for a number of years, spent 13 years working with the Outer Banks Beach Club, and was really vested with the March of Dimes. So I just want to take a minute to ask you to think of John Stevens and his extended family as we move into our moment of silence, please. Next up is the agenda approval.
Motion to read.
Motion is...
Second.
Okay. Well, do we have any discussion on agenda? Those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you. Okay, this is the first time set aside this evening for public comment. We have two opportunities tonight. We always do one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to present something to the board on any topic of their choosing to do so. We do ask if you're speaking as an individual, if you try to keep your comments to three minutes, if you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you could keep those comments to five minutes. If you are included with an agenda item, then you'd have an opportunity to speak at that agenda item. But this is if anyone wants to bring up anything that's not on the agenda. So Eddie, did you say you did sign up? So we'll take Eddie first, thank you, and then we'll go from there. If anyone wants to speak, we'll just call from the floor. So welcome, Eddie.
My name's Eddie Goodrich, and I've seen that before. And my eight-year-old niece said that my wife and her sister embarrassed her.
She won't be embarrassed when she gets older. It's just the age thing.
It must be. On June 27th, the Board approved the addition of cottage courts in Ocean Impact Residential Zone and Commercial Zone, along with that approval of the definition of a cottage court reads as follows: "A group of three or more detached single-family dwelling units, each with one or more bedrooms located on a single lot, being under single ownership and used primarily for rental purposes." This definition is well over 30 years old, and the days of the mom-and-pop cottage courts are long gone. Times have changed. The cottage courts of today will be managed by real estate management companies, cleaned by cleaning companies, maintained by maintenance companies. The open space will be maintained by landscaping companies. The cottages will have keyless entry, and they will be governed by homeowners' associations with covenants and bylaws to protect the homeowner's rights and, to that end, protect the town. The restriction of being under single ownership, though not totally unrealistic, is extremely limiting in today's real estate market. And the real question is, what is wrong with a family or an individual owning a house in a cottage court? I am asking the Board today to consider modifying the definition of cottage court to not only allow single ownership as it currently does, but to allow individual ownership in the form of zero-lot lounge houses, which are commonly referred to as patio homes or detached townhouses, where the land underneath the structure can be conveyed by fee simple title, and the balance of the property will remain under single ownership. I don't know if you have any questions, but that's all I really want to ask.
Okay. Thank you. Does it understand what Eddie's asking?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Eddie.
Thanks, Eddie.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Yes, welcome. Eddie, do you approach the podium if you would identify yourself for the clerk by name and address, please? So welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Pat Bloom. I live at 3132 Bay Drive at Kill Devil Hills. But I'm here tonight to address you as the chair-elect of the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce. And I'm going to leave some letters that I will pass out to you when I go, but I'd just like to read a letter into the minutes with regard to the housing initiative we've been involved with for a while. We came and spoke to you about it earlier in the year, kind of telling you we were taking on this task and having put some time and effort into it. We kind of wanted to give you an update on where we are and asked the Board to consider taking some leadership and direction moving this forward. The housing crisis on the Outer Banks is real. Health-related signs are seen everywhere, and we hear from businesses daily about their inability to find workers. This is not just a seasonal change; it has become a year-round problem. Professional jobs go unfulfilled at our hospital and our healthcare system. People are hired but can't find reasonably priced housing, so they opt to leave. The community college is trying to offer technical classes but can't find instructors for the same reason. The Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce formed a committee in the spring of 2017 to look into the change of housing for our community. This includes not only seasonal workforce housing, but year-round rentals and reasonably priced single-family homes. The committee includes stakeholders from around the Outer Banks region. We learned early on that zoning is one of the core issues when it comes to addressing the housing crisis. A number of current zoning ordinances in the county and towns make addressing this issue difficult. With this in mind, the chamber and its committees have been reviewing current ordinances to determine where changes can allow for less restrictive size of lots, higher densities for development in appropriate areas, and thus creating opportunities for private developers to address the housing crisis. Together, we hope that we can ensure our community has the services it needs backed by the skilled, competent, and caring people. We have met with your planning staff to kind of review our understanding of the ordinances. Based on those conversations, we're coming to the Board tonight, asking you to consider looking at certain areas where we think there might be opportunities to help this problem. Our request is that you look over these items and perhaps direct your planning board and planning staff to consider whether or not there are opportunities here that are in line with your priorities. First item would be add a definition for accessory dwelling unit in Kill Devil Hills. As we understand it, there is no such definition, so as a result, they cannot be allowed for. Also add a definition for long-term rentals, long-term occupancy, as a residential dwelling that is occupied and used for residency and housekeeping purposes for a period of 31 days or more. Just to back up for a second, the accessory dwelling unit is designed essentially to go after low-hanging fruit that frankly probably already exists and is in use. Apartments above garages, apartments not in flood zones on the ground floor of a house, where no planning that goes on already. We're trying to allow for the opportunity of making it legal where it should be and therefore inspected and safely constructed, and then allow people to be getting the protection they want for this. What we don't want to see, and I think is happening rampantly in Kill Devil Hills as well as much of the Outer Banks, is this is being done today and we're being returned into Airbnbs. And so we're adding to the short-term vacation rentals and not using that property as potential long-term employee rental. So our intent in asking you to consider a definition for long-term rentals is if you allow some density variations or other changes to your zoning ordinances that allow reuses, that we find a way to restrict those so that they're designed for long-term residents, not short-term rentals where possible. Allow accessory dwelling units to be a permitted use everywhere that allows for single-family residential units today. Restrict the use of accessory dwelling units approved under these regulations for long-term rentals as defined. Review parking requirements, and where possible, consider shared parking agreements. And what we're thinking about here, and it's come to our attention through a couple of developers, is that with searing through part of the commercial district of town, there might be opportunity for putting residential, which is allowed by use, on those sites, as well as the commercial, but might require some shared parking arrangements to make the site work. So consider that as an option. The other thing we'd ask you to like to look at is allowing duplexes on lots less than 20,000 square feet, and allow a lot size that is the same for a single-family residential as a duplex where it's the same number of bedrooms and bathrooms. So restrict how many people can live in the building as opposed to restrict how many different family units might be living in the building. Thank you for your time to consider this. I will leave copies of these letters. I'm here, as is Karen Brown, our president, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And also noticed Bob Peel came in as well while you were speaking, so thank all of you for the work that you're doing and sharing that with us this evening. Okay, so anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Anyone? Okay, then we'll close public comment. Response to public comments. So first to Eddie's request. Initial thoughts from the Board?
I think it's definitely worth looking into. So let's...
I think we need to look at it.
Look at it, let the staff kind of, whatever it is, bring it to us and see what comes out of it. Very valid point.
So procedurally to...
Procedurally, he would need to submit a text amendment.
Okay. Eddie, are you hearing? Procedurally, so the Board is sharing that they're interested in looking into this, but procedurally, we would need you to submit a text amendment to that ordinance.
I will.
Okay. And then that would then go through the planning board process and back here ultimately for a decision.
Yes, ma'am. Public hearing and then decision.
Okay. Everybody on the same page?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then Pat, Bob, and Karen, again, thank you so much for bringing that to us. Thoughts from the Board? Is there consensus to send this to Planning Director and team, to then also go through the process looking at it with our planning board? Because some of these involve, ultimately, could be ordinance changes.
I have support of it. It's a good idea.
I would think if there's consensus on the Board, we could schedule it for and put on the agenda at a future meeting to discuss it, and then if it's time to think about it, and then discuss it then, and then pass it on to staff. See it as an agenda item rather than coming off of a public comment.
So we can discuss it first and...
To be able to give staff some direction. So schedule it for an agenda item here to take each, because I don't have the letter in front of me. It was four or five, maybe, or five or six items. That way, we can provide some guidance to...
Correct. Yes, I think as well. Good idea.
Yeah, I think probably have it on the agenda.
Okay.
And if there's consensus at the Board, we'll schedule that for the next meeting in September?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds great. Okay. Super. Thank you all. Good. Okay, we'll move on then now to introductions and presentations. We have two exciting promotion ceremonies tonight for Captain John Tower and Lieutenant David Pierce. So turn this over to Assistant Chief.
Detective Pierce, would you please come up? With Karen. Just so that you know, at the end of July, we have Captain retiring. Captain retiring, it is a two administrative supervisory position. And we went through the process, emotional process, and two candidates before you are the ones that were picked, or what they're back to receive. I'll start with Lieutenant Tyler first. Lieutenant Tyler, do you promise to fulfill the duties of the rank of captain of the Kill Devil Hills Police Department?
I do.
Okay. Congratulations, Captain How. Detective Pierce, do you promise to fulfill the duties of rank of lieutenant for the Kill Devil Hills Police Department?
I do.
Congratulations, Lieutenant Pierce.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
I have one more thing I'd like to do. This came in some time ago when he was a detective. And Mr. Pierce, Detective Pierce, completed 500 hours of classroom work in the criminal investigation unit. He is awarded by the North Carolina Justice Academy, the Criminal Investigation Certificate Program on the 28th day of June 2018. Thank you all very much.
I like that kind of stuff. Yeah, that's good. Okay, next, under introductions and presentations, we have Sam Crowe with the Tidewater. He's the Tidewater Council President. Actually, I think we have several individuals here, but Sam's going to lead us with the presentation, recognizing Local Troop 116 and PAC 116 for their really successful fundraising initiative and helping one of our KDH firefighters, Luis Rodriguez. So welcome so much to our meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. I'm Sam Crowe, President of the Tidewater Council Boy Scouts of America, and we are chartered by the National Boy Scouts of America to provide the scouting program in our territory, which includes Kill Devil Hills and all of Deere County. The Scouts of PAC 116 and Troop 116 did what we call a good turn, and because of that, we're going to enact a proclamation tomorrow at our board meeting, which is really the first board meeting we've had since the events occurred. So I'd like to, if I may, read the proclamation and then recognize those scouts in attendance today. So our proclamation is, whereas for over 100 years, the mission of the Boy Scouts of America has been to build character, develop physical fitness, teach practical skills, promote community service, and prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the Scout Oath and Law. And whereas the Scout Oath and Scout Law teaches scouts, among other things, to be loyal and helpful citizens. And whereas Cub Scout PAC 116 and Boy Scout Troop 116, chartered by Outer Banks Presbyterian Church, put the values of the scouting program into practice on June 30th, 2018, when they, their adult leaders, siblings, and parents, along with the Kill Devil Hills and Collington Fire Departments, held a fundraising car wash at Outer Banks Presbyterian Church to benefit firefighter Luis Rodriguez in his fight against cancer. And whereas these efforts raised over $5,500 to assist firefighter Rodriguez, now therefore, be it resolved that the Tidewater Council Boy Scouts of America, Inc., hereby recognizes Cub Scout PAC 116 and Boy Scout Troop 116 for embodying the Scout Law and the Scout Oath in connection with the June 30, 2018 fundraising car wash to benefit firefighter Luis Rodriguez. And it is further resolved that the Tidewater Council Boy Scouts of America, Inc., hereby expresses its appreciation too and commends Cub Scout PAC 116 and Boy Scout Troop 116 for their efforts and accomplishments. At this point, I'd like to ask the members of both Troops 116 who are recognizable that are in uniform, and any of members of PAC 116 who are here to stand up and be recognized.
Thank you so much. And Sam, along with you reading the proclamation, I also want to present the members of the people that are here, the Kill Devil Hills fans. So thank you all. And I'd also like to recognize two of our commissioners that were really involved, not only in the establishment of the car wash and in the recognition of the troops. So thank you, Commissioner Winley and Commissioner Gray.
You're welcome.
As well. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next item, under introductions and presentations, is item number three. Keith Newsom cannot be here tonight, but Commissioner Gray is going to make some comments before we present the banner.
Keith and Barbara Newsom are residents and business owners in Kill Devil Hills, and they are very, very concerned with maintaining the pristine nature of our beach. They do a lot of clean-the-beach activities personally, and plus, anytime we have events going on, they do that. They were pretty excited about our Community Apairance Commission and what they are accomplishing with the Kick Butt Program and the other items that they're dealing with. And Keith wanted to donate a banner for them so they could help promote themselves at different events. And they used it at National Night Out, and I think it looked pretty good. If I'm not mistaken, we have the banner here. That's it. Here, John, let's go over it. All right. Wait a minute. John's on the committee, so...
And Sam, do you want to come up as the chair of the committee? And I think you would do a third opportunity for the banner.
Check it out. Good seeing you.
This one applies. It'll make the conversation. But this is what we have donated from one of our people, Keith and Barbara Newsom. And this goes to this lady.
So should we do the banner tonight?
Go ahead. Yeah.
Shall we do that now? These are our little things we gave away at National Night Out, which we are so appreciative of our commissioners for allowing us to do this by funding the money. But if you know anybody who smokes and they don't really deal with their butts very well, don't put them in the trash, because they'll go in a safe place and ultimately end up in the proper trash. But this is wonderful. This is great. This made our whole table at National Night Out really work.
Yeah, really.
This is made from reusable mesh material. It's going to last years. And the fact that it's durable, the ability to keep using it over and over again, ties into the, I guess, the environmentally friendly thing we're trying to get. So we really appreciate having you as a resource and helping spread the word. All right.
Okay. Next, under introductions and presentations, we have Ms. Roxana Ballinger, the Health Education and Outreach Director for the Deere County Department of Health and Human Services, Public Health Division here. And I'd also like to recognize Roxana co-chairs the Saving Lives Task Force with the Vice-Chairman of the Deere County Board of Commissioners, Mr. Wally Overman, who is here with us as well this evening. Thanks so much for being here. And thank you also, Wally, for the tremendous work you do in our community around this whole initiative. So we're going to hear more about it tonight, but hats off to you and your dedication. So thank you. And Roxana, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I want to thank John Winley, Commissioner Winley, for the invite tonight to get the opportunity to talk about what we're doing at the Saving Lives Task Force and this new pilot program. The task force has been around for about four years now, and we started out in prevention, and we evolved very quickly to broaden our scope, to include treatment and recovery and access to services and many things. So I'm going to go through this presentation, and you'll see the reason that we have started this pilot program with the town of Kill Devil Hills, and we've named it the Saving Lives Response Team. We actually just started about maybe six weeks ago, so we're really new. We don't have a whole lot of data to share, but we're going to share information that we have to date and what we have done to date. So our current situation, is there something to... Turn it with... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. Just to give some background of our current situation, which I'm sure everyone is aware of, we have a lot of overdose calls in the county. The EMS administered 52 doses of naloxone in 2017, and 38% of those people were from the town of Kill Devil Hills. Six of those people refused transport to the hospital. Their overdose was reversed with the naloxone, and, you know, they wake up and they feel fine, and they're like, leave me alone, and they walk away. In 2018, so far for the first and second quarter, naloxone has been administered to 20 people, and six of those people were in the town of Kill Devil Hills. We also have the Needle Exchange Program, which is administered by Source Church, and 14 naloxone community reversals have been reported, and this is an under-reported number. Our background, like I just mentioned, we have multiple overdoses, multiple calls, sometimes EMS has gone to the same house two or three times. They administer the naloxone and hopefully get them to the hospital, but they don't always want to do that. So part of this initiative is to reach out to these people after the overdose. Right now, we have no, we don't have any kind of program or service for that. Community expectations, I think our community wants us to do something, and especially as leaders in the community and stakeholders. The community expects us to handle these kind of situations, to deal with it, to make the community more safe, and address any kind of problems and harms that are associated with opioid crisis. So what we're trying to do is create a 360-degree solution. We have prevention education, we have recovery services, we have community and provider education, awareness events, we have harm reduction, naloxone. We're getting naloxone out in the community. It's not just with law enforcement anymore. We have drug drop-off boxes. I believe every police department now has one, except Manio. Walgreens now has a drug drop-off box. I'm working with Walgreens and CVS to get pill disposal bags given out with every opioid prescription. So we're doing a lot of things, but one thing that we're not doing is following up with these people. We don't have a response team after the overdose, and so that's the purpose of the pilot. As I said, we're very new, but our mission statement is, the Saving Lives Response Team will provide peer support services to individuals after an opioid overdose reversal. We're a group of community professionals who have experience working with individuals with substance use disorders. We believe people with substance use disorders are unique individuals... We believe people with substance use disorders are unique individuals who have experienced trauma and need understanding, support to move forward, and to take that next step to get help and recovery. What are some of the benefits of having a response team? It builds trust, it instills hope, someone to call on to get help when you need it. It provides harm reduction, naloxone, overdose prevention training, and how to prevent infections. It links people to resources, the syringe exchange program, detox rehab providers, and sometimes it's just basic needs like food or somewhere to sleep for the night. It reduces barriers to taking that next step. That's a big role of the outreach worker that we're going to have on the team. It provides rapid HIV and Hep C testing, and it brings stakeholders together to reduce overdoses and reduce deaths as a whole. Some of our goals, and these are pretty new, like I said, we've only been meeting now for about six weeks. Some of our goals, engage clients and family to build relationships, trust, and instill hope, and that's a big thing. It took, I want to say, a year or more for the Source Church to really have that word of mouth and that what they were doing was safe, and people could trust them in that population. So, we're going to need to do the same thing. Provide education and support in the community on addiction, direct clients to harm reduction services, access to treatment and recovery, and ultimately reduce deaths and repeated incidences of overdose. We are set to launch the program September 1st. We're meeting again next week to kind of finalize things. We've developed our communication plan, our follow-up plan. Ideally, we want to follow up 24 to 72 hours after a overdose to reach out to this person. Sometimes it can take six to seven times reaching out to the same person before they are trusting enough and willing to make that next step to get treatment. So, we have sent a peer support specialist to training, so she will be a certified person to work with this person. She's going to be called our outreach counselor, outreach worker, so she'll be doing that. And we probably won't have really any kind of data or anything to show. I'm guessing probably six months to a year. Ultimately, the plan is to expand this to entire county, all of Dare County. We're starting the pilot with Kill Devil Hills, and we're ready to go and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Roxana, do you want to introduce Ashley since Ashley, she's here?
Actually, our outreach worker is Ashley Bain. This is Ashley right here. Like I said, she has gone for training. Ashley is a counselor by profession, so she's very prepared for this job. She has a lot of support. We have a lot of resources in the community, people in recovery, treatment providers, lots of people that will be providing support to her as we start down this journey and learn more about the program and what we need to do.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Roxana?
What would the response teams look like? Will it be people from the recovery community? Will it be medical professionals? Will it be groups of both? Like, who is going to be the people who need to follow up with people as needed?
We are starting with Ashley Bain. She is going to be the outreach worker who actually will do the follow-up. And, you know, we're starting small. Starting small, that's why we're, you know, we're lucky enough to be able to do the pilot with the Kill Town and Kill Devil Hills. You know, we need to start small so we can assess what our needs are and get some feedback from EMS, from all the different entities, and even the people that we're working with in the community on what works best and what they actually need. We've researched other counties in other states, so we've done a lot of research, homework, and asking a lot of questions, so.
We're so fortunate in Dare County, and especially the last four years, the work that the Saving Lives Task Force has done to get us in a position now to have a program like that. So, while Ashley is going to be the individual that makes that face-to-face contact and, you know, really tries to instill that hope and trust, behind Ashley is the team that sits around the table at these task force meetings, and the team in the community, whether it's living crisis, or the providers that can help get people to detox, or the Source Church that runs the Needle Exchange Program, or law enforcement, there's an army behind her of people that can help when people, when the individual is finally ready to get help. And so, hopefully, Ashley will be able to bridge those connections. And so, I think, yeah, hats off to the team for putting this together. I think it's really exciting. So, and also, hats off to KDH Police Department for being willing to kind of be that pilot community to see. I liked in your slide, Roxana, when you talked about some communities right now are kind of staged, just watching what other communities are doing. And they're staged because they're not willing to take the risk to try something for the fear of failure. There's a great book out there about failing forward, and sometimes that's because you, as you try things and learn, you'll improve on the process. And I think this is going to be a great example. There likely could be setbacks, but I think at the end of the day, when you look a year down or you're half down the road, how much further is a community will have come in helping address this vulnerable population, so.
Yeah, absolutely. If we don't do anything, nothing's going to change in the opioid crisis, and that situation is, it's not getting better yet. We still have a ways to go, and it's going to take a long time. So, I think this is a great next step. You know, we're getting the naloxone out there, and we're saving people's lives, and, but the next thing is we have to reach back out to them to help them, to get them where they need to go, or when they're ready to go.
Do you have an idea of when we can expect to see some kind of results on what you're experiencing?
Well, you know, we actually talked about that last week when we met, and the consensus was six months to a year.
I was thinking six months as well. Yep.
Thank you.
That's even time to work, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. Anything else? Okay. Great work.
Good stuff.
Okay. We will move on then to new business. Item number one is a site plan review, ITAC 409 LLC. This is at 806 West Airstrip Road, the light industrial two Zerney District. This is for a proposed 12,489 square foot, six-unit multifamily dwelling with 18 parking spaces and associated site modifications. This has gone to our planning board and has come to us with a favorable recommendation to move it forward. And Mike Robinson is here if we have questions?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Okay. So, questions, comments, thoughts?
One question that I have is I wanted to ensure myself that this is going to contain all of the stormwater on-site, correct?
That's correct. That's correct for the 4.3-inch design storm that's mandated by the town. It is containing it all on-site.
Other than that, I thought it looked pretty good.
Great. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, yeah. It's been brought up before about the appearance of the building. Is there still plans to do something with the architecture?
Yes, there is, and I just dropped off to Cameron. The, I didn't get it in time to have it in this submittal, but they have dressed up the building a little bit. They've added some dormers, they've added some features over the doors and the rear doors. It looks better. It, yeah, it wasn't the most.
Good. Yeah. I wanted to ask too about the lighting. I know, I realize the lighting that's there is, if it performs properly, is going to be up to code. There's going to be two light poles in the front. There's ones on the building, but there's two in the front that are like 18 to 20 feet.
That's correct. Yeah, the two fixtures that are shown on one of the, on the detailed sheet.
And even though, as I said, even though the lights bill over at the property line, it looks like it's going to be in compliance, there's still going to be a lot of light in that area, which, and everything around there, although it is light industrial, everything around there is, happens to be residences. Some of them are in the light industrial, some are on Airstrip Road, you know, that aren't in the light industrial.
You know.
And I just wondered if there was a, I know some places are willing to have a couple of extra lights, but having them lower, they'd still give you the same amount of light, still meet a criteria, but they're not up here, like.
Yeah. That's, it sort of gets tricky when we're trying to maintain an average foot candle over a parking lot, and we, there's a minimum foot candle that we had to maintain here. I'm with you. I'm not a big fan of lights in the residential district at all, in my world. But I also understand when you have a multifamily building, you don't necessarily know everybody that's in that building, so you don't know if that guy standing out back even belongs there, you know? So, from that perspective, I understood the necessity to have lights all the way around the building and to maintain minimum foot candles within the parking lot. And it's really, you can either put dozens of small fixtures to maintain that. I tried to use an LED fixture, a very low-impact light fixture. It's shielded, and the same with the wall packs that we're going to use. They're shielded, very low-impact. It's sort of the nature of the beast when we're trying to maintain a minimum foot candle level within, in a parking lot or a multifamily building like this.
Yeah. And also, I know it's lighting, or the landscape plan is up to code, and it's great, you know, but I would never complain about it and quite put more in, you know?
Yeah. And you know.
I mean, that's, I mean, to me, I'm not a contractor. It seems like a small thing to put an extra dozen trees somewhere.
Well, the trees are so crammed in right now, there's, the requirements for buffering are pretty intense, the spacing on the trees. It's actually probably more intense than what will actually survive long-term because of how, you know, the on-center spacing of the buffered trees. I think the, you know, I think selection of species is going to be critical in there, and I've selected species that I think will work well. They may very well want to substitute some things. We'll bring that into planning if that's the case. We'll just see how that goes.
Yeah, crepe beetles and Russian olive right now. They're fast-growing.
That's correct. Yes, they're fast-growing, and, you know, they seem to thrive in that environment.
Yeah, I know, because that area, I mean, I don't live far from here. I live on Sixth Avenue, and I know that people have heard about something going in there, and they're concerned, and likely so, but, I mean, there's nothing wrong with the plan. Don't get me wrong. I'm not complaining about that. It's up to code. Everything looks great on it. But it's just one of those things that I think, in my mind, requires mentioning every once in a while.
Yeah.
To keep people aware and developers aware that there's a whole bunch of people worrying what you're doing.
That's, that's correct. And, yeah.
Thanks, man.
And again, I personally feel like the light levels is, would be something you guys might want to take a look at at some point, because I think they're a little brighter than they need to be, so. But that's just my opinion.
I didn't hear that from you, right?
What's that?
I didn't hear that from you, right?
No. No, no, I see. They meet the ordinance there, they maintain the minimum foot candle averages, but I think the minimum foot candle averages are slightly higher than they need to be.
Thanks, man. Good job.
Any other comments? I thank you for going back and taking the comments from the planning board. I haven't obviously seen what you submitted, but whatever you did to add to the external appearance really was voluntary. I mean, you had already met the requirements, but I think you were doing more just to be a good neighbor, so I really appreciate that. And if you'll tell your stakeholders, thank you as well.
I will, and that really was something they were intending to do anyhow. That first set of architecture was just a quick flush. They didn't want to spend a lot of money on developing the plans until we had planning board approval, and now they're continuing on taking it to the next level.
That's great. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Caroline.
Okay, so with that, a motion will be in order.
I would move that we approve site plan, ITAC 409 LLC, 806 West Airstrip Road, and that'll do it.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve the site plan is submitted. Is there a second?
No, sir.
Okay, any other discussion? Others in favor, please sign their signature. Aye. Any opposed? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, under new business, is appointments. We have two positions on the planning board that will expire this September of 2018. James Almany and Ryan Seidman, they both desire to be reappointed, so it's their direction from the board.
I make a motion that we reappoint James Almany and Ryan Seidman to another term on the planning board.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion?
I'd be thankful both of your service.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Others in favor, please sign their signature.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay, we will move on then to committee reports. Does any member have a committee report to share this evening?
Yeah.
I will share quickly. We had a government education channel meeting this afternoon, and Kill Devil Hills' request for our LPDI funds was approved in full, so. Great. Yep, and that's for funding to produce our eclipse and contract with Benny Baldwin, as well as for some equipment to create some redundancy. Like, last meeting, we had a little bit of an equipment issue, and so we'll have some equipment redundancy to hopefully prevent any of that in the future, too, so. Anyone else with a committee report?
I do have something about tourism board. I'll do it now. I was going to do it, Commissioner, and I'll do it now. Our last tourism board meeting, and actually the one before, it was hinted at, but our last tourism board meeting, we were approached officially by the town of Nagseth. When that event site was started there, there was an amount of money that was put into it in the beginning, and it was substantial. And the town of Nagseth, I hope I'm not wrong, I think initially they were like a 30 percent sponsor, a 32 percent sponsor. But part of the agreement was at the time, and it's still in fact, is that if you're the party willing to make out of the deal, it was other parties' choice whether or not to buy them out. And it's going to be a pretty substantial amount of money, in the millions, I mean, single digits, but in the low millions. So, that's something that's being considered by the, you know, the attorneys looking at it first of all, and then it's been talked about on the board level, and it'll be talked about again, so I don't know where that's going. It'll probably go through, because we don't want to be, you know, force somebody to be in there. They use the money they borrow from their water fund, and they've had some complaints about water rates, and the money from the water funds being, some of it's being diverted. The best of my understanding is what's happening. So, they thought it was in the best interest of them to just get out of it, so. And the other thing of importance was the, you know, we purchased the South Beach Grill property a few months ago, and we tried to purchase the one next to, but there's something, there's a strip shop going up there. Somebody else bought it. But the owners of the next-door property where the Dairy Queen is have been asking an amount of money that was totally out of reach of the board, of the tourism board. But they're under different circumstances right now and came back with a much lower figure, so that's something that's being looked at. So, that negotiation might be reopened and might be able to purchase the next-door property, which includes Dairy Queen, you know, there's a little golf course there, there's that ropes course in the back, and the ropes course has a long-term lease, but that could be taken care of, so. But those are a couple of things that are being looked at right now, and we also have plans for a building on the property. And that's been since the beginning, they were trying to plan an event building on the property, of course, you know, fully with restrooms and the whole thing. But if you take all three of these things together right now, there's not nearly enough money to do all of them, so we have to decide if we're going to not do the building and buy the property, or not do either of those and buy out Nagseth, or, so right now, it's kind of in a, it's a kind of influx, and we don't have the money to do it all, but maybe in time, you know, things will build back up and we'll be able to do that. I'll keep you posted. We need to pay for it.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Winnie?
I've got a few things to share. At town, we had our first community watch meeting, the 25th July. Turnout was really good, and I was kind of impressed up to today. I think our community watch meeting, unfortunately, gave our board of commissioners, means we probably saw how it was beating as far as attendance goes, but I think we kind of evened up the scorecard today. I wanted to really call out Colin Almany. She really stepped up in the leadership role for this group. She set up the community watch Facebook page. She's already organized and scheduled our next meeting. She's been steering kind of people. This is a new thing. We were in our infancy, so we were trying to figure out what we wanted to do, and she's kind of helping people together and kind of get us going. So, she's been a wonderful help, and I really appreciate that. So, next meeting will be September 19th in this room. I don't have the exact time yet. I assume it'll be 6:00 o'clock in the evening, but please check for details once this confirmed. The next Saving Lives Task Force meeting will be September 18th at the Dare County Municipal Building. Usually those meetings are at 3:00 in the afternoon. We'll hear more details on our, the pilot program Roxana had talked about earlier, and all the other issues and programs going around the county to help combat substance abuse. I've been lucky enough to be attending these meetings for about seven or eight months now, and it's really, really impactful. I encourage everybody in the room, if you can go, if you're interested in going, please do it. Tomorrow morning, 8:30 AM is our next Community Appearance Commission meeting. Tomorrow morning, 8:30 AM is our next Community Appearance Commission meeting, we have two programs that we really are focusing on, the first is the Help KDH Kick Bus Committee, and also we have our Plastic Bags Initiative. Our last Kick Spots meeting was on the 15th of August, we reviewed the success of National Night Out, feedback was positive and strong, we were happy with really getting a name out there, really getting awareness, and people seemed really engaged with it, and it was a busy table, 'cause the table was shared with Community Watch, so a lot of traffic was driven our way, and again, that banner saved the day, it really, really shined, it really made an impact, and it drew people in, we really, really are appreciative of that. Now, Sue, I'm glad we handed out roughly 100 portable ashtrays, and those items, I think we were picky, we didn't just give them out to anybody to grab, then we kind of explained to people what they were, and tried to kind of gauge them, if they were the target audience for a while, we don't want this resource to kind of get wasted, so that was successful as well. I want to take a second, too, to thank Scott Lawrence, he and the Surf Riders Foundation have installed the initial 10 cigarette butler's receptacles at different beach accesses through town. And we're gonna do, the plan is to expand those as we can, and also maybe try to find a non-impactful marketing campaign to draw attention to those, so it's kind of explain what they are and why they're there, and try to, you know, improve behaviors, and really get the message out that Kill Devil Hills is a town that cares about our environment and wants to keep our town clean. Last piece of business for the CAC, we have, we are planning to have our table up again at the Ice Cream Social, which is scheduled for October 1st, 12:30 PM to 7:00 PM at Aviation Park, and also at the Surf Riders Beach Sweep after-party on September 22nd at the Brewing Station. And that's all my reports.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Okay, we will move on to Commissioner's agenda, Commissioner Gray?
That meeting on the 19th was 6:30.
6:30?
Yeah, 6:30. And just another little side note, the Facebook page is up to 42 members, so it's gaining momentum, and as John said, it's, there's a lot of talk about it, I think there's a lot of interest, so it's a good thing. Mary's gonna have to probably help me out on this a little bit, and I wanna commend Mary, she's been working very diligently with Jennifer Gilbreth, who is from the Nature Conservancy, they're planning, what they're doing is they're re-releasing a book that was done, Everybody Helped His Neighbor, and it's memories of Naggshead Woods, which is where most of the people used to live way back when. No, I wasn't here then, but this, this is gonna be, the re-release party is gonna be September the 27th at Wave Riders Coffee Deli and Pub at 6:00 PM. It promises to have a lot of the original families, you know, that are gonna be there. I think it's gonna be a fun event, so if anybody's interested in going, mark that on your calendar, I think it'd be neat to be there. And Mary, thank you so much, Mary's put a lot of work in this, and she's really brought it full circle.
Well, we hope to do a little bit more, too, maybe by filming the re-release, and also putting some of the video that we get from that, and some of the audio that we have access to, we will connect on town's website.
Yeah, they interviewed a lot of the people.
And being able to, being able to offer an audio/video takes history to another level.
Yeah.
And I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah. My grandmother was interviewed, and they interviewed a lot of the people that lived back in Naggshead Woods. It was, it was pretty moving for me to listen to her interview, it was pretty moving. But that's gonna be an interesting thing, I think. The next item that I had that I wanted to talk about, and I'm gonna try to be quick about it, might not work, but I'm gonna try to be, is stormwater. We have a huge problem, as other municipalities do, and the county does, with stormwater. I've given some pictures to Michael, and he's got one up on the screen here now, this is a drainage ditch, it's across from the fire department, and across from Mako Mike's. You can see that in the last rain event that we had, it spilled over into the street and into the adjacent neighborhood, to what degree, I don't know, I know I rode around a couple of the streets, and they were flooded. There should be another picture, should be two more on there, and there's really, that really, right here, here's why it all backed up, is because the culvert that should be draining this area is high and dry. That's why, to me, and from a layman's standpoint, that's why it's really important that we have maintenance on these swales, ditches, and drainage devices, because if not, then they're just gonna back up. Now, this is maintained Steve by DOT, correct? So, what role does Kill Devil Hills have in this? It's our responsibility to look at this and see that they've got it done, and I guess that leads me into what my main thrust is in this whole comment. This stormwater problem is bigger than Kill Devil Hills can handle, it's bigger than any one of our towns can handle, it's gonna take everybody coming together, utilizing DOT, utilizing Kill Devil Hills. We're fortunate, we have a couple of Cracker Jack guys in Steve and in Pete, I've seen some of the things that they've put in place that are just phenomenal. People flooded out, but they came in and put a drain in, and they're not flooded now, they don't even have water. You know, I saw pictures, and I went and looked myself at a particular site on Sioux Street, a lot of the neighbors of this one particular place were flooded, and where we put the drain in, or Steve, actually, that was done before I got here, so it weren't we, it was when these guys did it, they were dry, that lot didn't have any water on it. So, they've got the right approach, but we've got to somehow come to the table in a group setting or format, so that we can bring everybody else to the table and get this stuff done. These guys are on the money, they know what they're doing, we've just got to give them the resources and the go-ahead to get it done. There's a lot of people in our town that are getting flooded out, you're not ever gonna be able to take care of 100%, you're gonna have water that's gonna, you know, build up and gonna be flooding people, you just can't handle 100% of it, but we can do better than what we're doing. I noticed with all the talk lately, DOT had an excavator out here at the corner of Collington Road, and they were cleaning out that ditch, I haven't seen that done in a long time, so we need to encourage them and get them to do more of that, that'll help us. So, guys, I don't know if I, you know, opened up the door for you or not, but if you wanna add anything to it, please help me out, but we've gotta do something, we got a lot of people in trouble.
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, these pictures specifically are US 158 Right Away, which is NCDOT, and I met with Jeff Ryder right after the late July, really bad events, and he did get the excavator out, did a little bit, but they're spread thin, and he had to pull the excavator out and go somewhere else, says he'll be back to finish where he worked, he's supposed to do the east side of the road, and then he's talked about moving up between first and second, where those pictures are, but he's just spread too thin with resources, and can't really commit to when they'll be back. And it all goes back to, that's flooding there, but his, his real concern becomes when the bypass has water on it. That water standing on the shoulders of the bypass is clear, he's, it isn't rise to an emergency situation with him. So, that's the word, as recent as this afternoon, from Dare County Maintenance Engineers, is too few resources, and trying to prioritize, and trying to get to them all, and Steve, I'll get back to you, and we'll, we'll take care of it, but I can't tell you when, so.
Well, that, you know, and I understand that, because even from the town's perspective, we're stretched thin, you guys do a great job with what you have, but we do have a maintenance program on our drainage systems with the town, and one of the things that is in that is that we have to monitor the DOT systems, and let them know when there's a problem, and encourage them to do that. And when we don't have water on the bypass, I understand, that's their main concern, but what they have to understand is, from the town's perspective, we've got water that is backing up and going into our neighborhoods and impacting our citizens, and that's a concern for us. So, you know, some way we can get together, and we can come up with a happy medium where we can handle a lot of this, implement some of the programs that you guys wanna put into place, some of the drainage systems, some of the improvements, and come out ahead of the game, in my opinion. Fair enough?
So, are there specific things that, for our town, that, I mean, I know we've been working for years, and we are in so much better shape than we used to be, but there are certainly, I mean, when you have these, I mean, just crazy rains like we've had, and the saturation, I mean, there's our, the rains that we've had this in August, take us back to the unprecedented rains that we saw, or waterfall that we saw back with Matthew, and so, I mean, are there things that you can put your finger on and say, oh, if the town had done this better, these folks wouldn't have flooded? I mean, are we there? I mean, and I ask that question because
I don't think so.
I don't know that it's that simple, it's so, I mean, the county, after these last rains, and they had quite a few people show up and speak at their commissioners' meeting who were dealing, I mean, especially on the north, Roanoke Island, and then some folks in Martin's Point, but the folks that came out to speak were Roanoke Island that just had, they had, I mean, most of them were like, we've never experienced this before, we've never experienced this before. And so after that, the county said they were gonna try to start forming a work group of some sort, and then they just held a special meeting, but it wasn't that work group, I don't know if that's still in the works for the commissioners, but I guess, you know, how do you, how do we build, or can we even budget in for this type of, these catastrophic rains to mitigate the water damage?
Mayor, I pray that was a rhetorical question, because I don't have a had answer for it. Someone, I think it was you, mentioned the concept of failing forward at the beginning of the meeting, I wanna take a variant on that, and I call it failing gracefully. When the good Lord, or nature, or whatever your particular persuasion chooses to blame it on, sends us in a 10-day period, 17 inches of rain, the statistics tell us, you know, that's a couple hundred year or more event. Now, I think the statistics are having to be rewritten to recognize these events, I mean, it ate the 50-year storm if it happens every two years, but whatever we have to deal with, I would like to see, and no matter whose money it comes from, it's our money, whether it's ours via the state, ours via the Fed, or ours via the town of Kill Devil Hills, it's still ourselves helping ourselves, and there's not an unlimited supply of it. Every year, since I've had the privilege to be associated with you, we've made some progress on storm drainage. We have a few secret tricks and weapons that we use, and we quietly integrate storm drainage into every single project we do, the one we're doing tomorrow, that we're opening bids in this room tomorrow for Whispering Pines, is about probably 40, 45% of storm drainage project, if you count putting the driveways back when we cut through them to put storm drainage pipes in it, probably close to 50%. These projects make a difference, but if we took some standard rulebook and tried to do it the Hampton Roads way, for example, there'd be just a ridiculous amount of money we'd have to spend. We're looking at ways to where if a 10 or 15-inch rain occurs, yes, there's water on some streets, but a day later, there isn't water on that street anymore, maybe a half day later, and hopefully that water depth is minimized. And so, some of it is the DOT, our system and theirs are interwoven in several parts of town, and as Steve pointed out, what is a crisis to us may not be quite as high on their priority list if it isn't causing the road to be impassable. So we become sort of their eyes and ears, and let them know when it's killing our folks with water. So, what else could we be doing that we aren't already doing? A few quick thoughts, we, I missed that the Street Improvement and Special Projects Committee developed years ago, earlier this year, I should say, I kept my hands on it right this second, here we go, the multicolored list of capital projects that we're looking at over the next seven or eight years, includes some projects that will help, for example, the Memorial Boulevard Truck Line, that often flooding area of Memorial Boulevard South, is doing so much better now that we've improved the north end, but we'll need to extend that help down to that area, so that they'll be even better than, or less bad than they are now. So, we'll keep bringing you projects that either include drainage in the mix, or a few of them, if you direct us, if you said, Pete and Steve, what projects could you bring us that are strictly focused on drainage, or primarily drainage? If you wanted to set up a separate project priority list, a funding stream for that, yes, sir, and yes, ma'am, we can bring you some good projects, as we already have. So, we're making progress, Steve will keep a sharp eye, and Derek on the state, and let them know when one of their system elements needs attention, whether it be a something as small as an 18-inch culvert, as you pointed out, or something as big as the, as the Big Canal that runs through the First Flight Village. But we're very sensitive to it, we're blown away by 13 inches in six hours in Matthew, or 17 and a half inches in 10 days, in the last 10 days of July, but all we can do is deal with it. It's like an elephant, we're eating it one bite at a time, and every year we take a bite, and I would simply commend that approach to our neighboring jurisdictions only. It's a heck of a problem, but you've just gotta get after it, and thank y'all for getting after it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and my final thought would be, I welcome any political support you can put behind pressure on DOT to increase staff, increase funding, increase attention to this kind of thing you see here in the picture, because like I said, what I constantly hear is underfunded, understaffed, spread too thin.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Well, to that end, maybe we certainly can do a letter from the board, stating that we heard a presentation tonight from Steve, and that, you know, that's what we're hearing is a challenge for DOT, and that we, we're hearing it, but it doesn't change the, what's needed.
We're hearing a lot of it from our citizens, too, or at least I am, I don't know, I can't gauge other, you know, board input, but I'm hearing a lot of it from the citizens, too, and I'm seeing a lot of them that are having the flooding issue, and it's not in one particular area of town. I do realize, again, like I said, I do realize I think it's a bigger problem than we can handle by ourselves, because number one, you gotta look at the ability to be able to afford some of this stuff, you know, that's a major concern, but if you don't try to get everybody at the table, and utilize what resources you can, then, you know, you're not doing anything to alleviate the problem, in my mind, so that's where I think we need to go, and the letter, I think that's a great idea.
Well, and I think in addition to a letter to NCDOT, I'd also like to propose we do a letter to Dare County, to Chairman Lutterd and the Dare County Commissioners, stating what we've, what we've learned through conversations with DOT, and asking for their assistance with advocacy for resources, but then also specifically asking them to, for follow-up on what they mentioned about convening a stakeholder group to look at this from a community perspective, 'cause what they mentioned at the commissioners' meeting was having NCDOT at the table for a stormwater management work group of some sort, and then representatives from each of the towns, so the letter could focus on requesting some progress with that.
Yeah, some progress.
Maybe asking for, are they gonna move forward with that, and that we would like to see that happen.
I think that's a great idea, and then the last thing that I wanted to say, and I'm And then the last thing that I wanted to say, and I'm glad that AC's here, this was a picture of, you know, and I'll pass this along, of a vehicle on one of KDH's streets. And not in a derogatory way, we need to do something with the cones. Because I saw a lot of cones that the police department had come out and put on streets to keep people from driving down them. People stopped, moved cones and went around them. I mean, that's just plain and simple. Something that appeared to be better was like a metal barricade where you could actually put it on the street and block it. So, but that's something staff would need to work with and come up with something. But I just don't think the cones were very effective.
And Commissioner Gray, Assistant Chief, has requested additional barricades for that very purpose.
Good deal.
And I'd kind of do a PSA too with this, because I recall this situation. If you get the warning on your phone that a flash flood is imminent, don't get in your car and drive around. Because a couple of these incidences happened right within 30 minutes of our flash flood. And, you know, my phone was ringing, or my thing was going off at the house and all. But yet, people had just started going down, and like, get off the road. That's the whole point of why we're getting these alerts. So just to take a few moments, if you're getting a flash flood notice, don't get in your car and drive. And then if you are in your car, try to get to some higher ground as soon as possible. Because that's the scary thing with these flash floods, when you have that much rain coming in such a short amount of time, you're not really sure which roads are going to flood.
And you don't know where you're going.
A couple of those were receded within an hour or two, because it was just that immediate flash flood, and then they, but people were out driving during those few minutes. It was crazy.
It's like TWs that went into a ditch that the car just about disappeared. So it's dangerous.
It is.
Very dangerous.
I don't think our weather patterns are looking any better in the future. I don't think we're going to see a big change in what we're seeing now for a long time, if ever.
And I agree with you. I don't think so either. And so I appreciate your indulgence with me on this, and that's all I have for the commissioners' agenda.
Thank you. And Steve and Pete and team, thank you. I know Derry had said he's seen you too. I mean, you guys during these events have been in ditches yourselves and cleaning things out, and the team going above and beyond. So thank you for all of the hard work that you're doing for our folks. Appreciate it. Okay, it's still on the commissioners' agenda.
Yes, we are. I just want to do one more follow-up thank you for our police department for National Night Out. It was a very proud day for our town, for all of Dare County, police department, Chief, Assistant Chief Sarah, you and your team did a wonderful job. Thanks to all the sponsors, thanks to our hosts, it really was a success. As of today, our Lip Sync Challenge video is up to 23,000 views just right out of week on YouTube. So that, that video is hitting a large audience. So, great job. I would be remiss if I didn't compliment our fire truck dance team. Right by yourself, sir, those are pretty slick moves up there. So we were all impressed with that. September 22nd is the Dare County Motorcycle Toy Run. This is one of the most special and important charity events in our county. It raises funds for Christmas presents, for toys for underprivileged children all across Dare County. It's been very successful. I invite everybody to check out their Facebook page, they're going to be making several stops. Run right across the street here for a follow-up at the Wright Brothers' memorial. I encourage everyone to donate if you're at all interested or come and enjoy the fellowship. It'll be a great day for a great cause. Kind of want to follow up the board as well. A few months ago, Mira Crockett from the Ocean Acres neighborhood came and asked us about some of her concerns with speeding issues on Ocean Acres Drive. I followed up with Mira and asked her, you know, how, better or worse, what the feedback is. She is very appreciative, as the overall neighborhood is, for the additional, I guess, patrols by the police department. But that is kind of a quick fix, and they are, there is a little appetite for a permanent solution. One thing I wanted to ask the board, if there was interest in, is maybe over the next few months, if staff could investigate, is there any physical, long-term, I guess, solutions that could be done for that street? And maybe we can consider for a future budget item in the next fiscal year. Take a couple of months to do some research and see what we can do, what the options are, and maybe discuss it when the next budget period comes around. And how does anybody think about that, feel about it? Not anything to rush into, but just to see what we could potentially do to address speeding there. I mean, I don't know, I don't believe there's our speed bumps or anything on those lines in Kill Double Hills, but there may be something we could do. And we could, it would give us time to talk to all staff and all stakeholders to maybe put together a plan that can help folks at ease with concerns and issues in that neighborhood. September 15th is the OBX Walk Against Addiction at First Flight High School. It's the ninth year in a row we've had that event in Dare County. It's, it kind of falls hand in hand with what the Saving Lives Task Force does. It'll be at a high school, 10 o'clock in the morning. I attended last year's event, it was a really nice walk, I believe we come to Collington Road, through the park here, back around. But it was, I encourage everybody to go or have speakers there to kind of talk more about, from a statewide and county-wide view, about addiction issues in North Carolina and Dare County. It's a nice event. The Surf Riders Foundation has scheduled their beach sweep for September 22nd, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And then the brewing station will host a, kind of an after-party in their backyard space that afternoon. The CAC decided to have our table there. It kind of, it's a really good target audience for us to network some more in the community. So we'll be there for the after-party, if somebody would like to volunteer at that event. And we do it for quite a while, it's a pretty big event. And it really complements our trash attack. We do trash attack in the fall, we do, excuse me, we do ours in the spring, they do theirs in the fall. It's nice to have, kind of two times a year when I dress in our community, and last, you know, enough to share. I'd like to congratulate Mary, Mary Maynes on her recent promotion. Thank you for all you do for our town, our county.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All I got.
This is sad. It is with great sadness that I have given everybody my resignation for the Board of Commissioners and serving my term here. I don't have an exact date yet, I kind of wanted to give everybody a heads-up so they would know in advance. We have a tentative closing date set for towards the end of September. I'm moving to Currituck. So I will not be able to serve as your commissioner anymore. So I've given everybody a written copy of my resignation, but even though it's not actually got a set date on it, I just didn't want to be here one day and then not be here the next. So I wanted to give everybody as much heads-up as possible and let you know that, again, this has been an absolute pleasure. The National Night Out is a prime example of the community spirit, the Community Appearance Committee, I mean, y'all have done such a great job. It has been my pleasure to work with everyone here. And it is with much sadness, and I had to think long and hard, but I think it's the best thing for my family, so that's what we're doing. And with that alternative.
Well, thank you for, goodness, almost seven years that you've been on the board. So I have my choice but to accept, I literally do, but obviously respect that what you need to do for you and your family, and wishing you all the best. And as Brandy stated, there's not a date on the letter, so we'll talk about our schedule here in a little bit as far as our upcoming meetings. But we certainly do have the one coming up in September that we'd still see you seated.
We don't have anything except, so we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Yeah, pleasure. Been, like you said, almost seven years, and we ran, the two of us ran together.
Yes, we did.
We'll have cake, but there's butter reasons to have cake.
No happy news, but I respect what you have to do.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on then to Mayor's Agenda. First item, this is in your packet. Back on August 14th, Representatives of the Town's Fire Department Chief was there. So his guys and I went and presented Fred Castellet with the Mayor's Achievement Award. Fred was a former member of the Board of Commissioners, a volunteer with the Fire Department, but most widely known in our community for his role, his connection with Santa. And for more than 20 years, really had that strong connection with Santa and brought hope and smiles and love and laughter, not just to Kill Double Hills, but throughout our community with his service. And so it was a special moment to be able to go present that award in his home. Due to his health, he wasn't able to come out here to accept it. But his daughter and son were there for the presentation and shared the proclamation with him. And it was very touching, and Chief, thanks to you and the guys for being there as well. He enjoyed seeing you guys. So it meant a lot to him. And it was a beautiful, I think it was in another picture elsewhere, hourglass with sand in it, which was really touching, with tides into, in here, with the announcement about the connection with how priceless and unique the grains of sand are, and really the gifts that Fred has given our community is in the same fashion. So, so I need to just, yeah, share that with everyone. That was great. Let's see, I'm going to go a little bit out of order, if you don't mind. Just skip to, in the packet also had a third item, which was change in the October meeting schedule. If you don't mind, we'll do that and then we'll go back to item two. So I don't know if you have been following in the news, and certainly even the local news with the meetings that the Dare County Board of Elections have been having, but there are significant statewide changes regarding early voting. They've dramatically altered the early voting schedule and requirements. So this is going to, you know, we used to be able to really work with them with our October meeting, but the requirements that are now placed on them, it just seems impossible to do it. And so in looking at the calendar, knowing that we can't do that meeting, if we moved it up a week, well, then we're only a week away from when we're going to be meeting. And then if we move it back, we're in the same boat. So what this memo is, is proposing, and typically that second meeting in October is the public forum. So what this is proposing is to combine the public forum with our regular meeting on October 8th, which we've done this kind of lately anyway, we'll knock out a little bit of business, try to keep the agenda light so we can focus on plenty of time for the forum. So that's what this is proposing, is we keep our meeting on October 8th, advertise it for the forum, and then cancel the October 24th meeting because early voting would be going on here. And see how the board feels about that.
Okay, I'm fine with it. I feel bad for our Board of Election staff, it's long days every now and then, for all the new kings. I appreciate all they do, but as far as this change, I think it's the right thing to do.
Okay, so we're fine then. Actually, procedurally, we'll need a motion to cancel the October 24th meeting.
I'll make a motion that we cancel the October 24th, 2018 Kill Double Hills Board of Commissioners meeting.
Great, I'll second that. Any other discussion? Others in favor? Please say a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll go to, what was in your packet is number two, this is, just moving it. But in accordance with provisions of the North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, Point 318, Point 11, Section E6, I make a motion for the Board of Commissioners to adjourn to closed session for personal discussions related to the Town Manager's Performance Evaluation.
Second.
Make a motion second, any discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will enter into closed session, and we will be back with you shortly. Okay, we will return now from closed session. During closed session, the Board of Commissioners conducted a performance review of the Town Manager, and the Board has provided direction for the Mayor and Town Manager were authorized to execute the terms of the review. So I will get with you, and we'll schedule a meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we're all incredibly proud and thankful for your service to us.
Thank you, thank you very much.
That was a summary.
Appreciate it. I like those kinds of summaries.
All right, well, let's pick back up on our agenda then, under Town Manager's Agenda.
No ma'am, I don't have anything, and the Town Attorney did not have anything this evening as well.
Okay, great. So we are on consent agenda, which is a big consent agenda.
Yes, it is. First item on the consent agenda is minutes from July 19th, 2018, including the joint work session, and those matrix are attached as part of the minutes for the land use plan update. Item number two is budget amendments. The first one is to record the encumbrances outstanding as of June 30th. The second is to record contributions to the Police Department for Crime Convention, Crime Prevention Activities. Number four is for expenditures relating to promotional and public relation items to promote the Kick Butt, Bag Smarter, and other initiative by the Community Appearance Commission at various town and community events, and the amount of 5,000 was the amount that was requested by the committee. And lastly, number five is to re-appropriate fund balance of lease purchases at the end of June 30th that were not encumbered for lease remote camera projects. Next page.
I don't relate to the final phase of improvements.
Number three is the recordation of the consensus approval of the hurricane disaster debris removal in our local agreement with Dare County. The Board actually did give us consensus of this, and we then got approval, got the approval back from Dare County Commissioners. Number four is the June 18th, June 2018 monthly report. Number five is a single-source water pump specifications for upgrading to the pump station at 1634 North Corotan. This is part of the final phase of the bid phase of construction for the new water tank. There were certain specific things that we did need for that, and that's why we've requested the single source. And approval of the consent agenda will record your approval. This is Pearson Pump Sales and Service Incorporated would be the vendor for the new pump, and it's at a cost of $42,554. And this is allowed in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143, 129, E6. Number six, these next three items are related to the final phase of improvements at the Public Works Complex. The first one is the adoption of a resolution regarding the proposed construction and financing arrangement of the final phase of construction of the Public Works Complex. Direction to staff to request financial proposals from banks. Number, or item B would be to schedule a public hearing on September the 10th, 2018. This is in keeping with the requirements of the LGC for borrowing this money. And lastly, is the authorization for staff to file an application with the LGC. The resolution regarding the proposed construction and financing arrangements for the proposed completion of the final phase of the Public Works Complex. Authorization for staff to file an application with the North Carolina Local Government Commission. If you'll give me just a moment, please. Mary, was it something I didn't have? Okay, sorry. So staff would recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented, and a motion would be in order.
So move second.
Any discussion? Okay, others in favor, please say a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Lots of housekeeping items, important items in there, so thank you. Okay, so we are back around for the second time since I've signed this evening for public comment. Steve, if you want to speak? Sue, you want to speak?
Sue Kelly, Sea Village Lane, on behalf of the Community Appearance Commission. I had to stick around long enough to say thank you. I think all the stuff I really wanted to say, and you know I don't talk a long time, was said by folks already tonight, but I want you to know how much the Community Appearance Commission appreciates the support. You created us, and you are allowing us to keep going. And thank you, Commissioner Gray, the banner's beautiful. Commissioner Winley, you're there all the time with us. Commissioner Reubottom, it's going to be sad not seeing you up here. Thank you for everything you've done. Commissioner Hogan and our mayor, you're always with us, you always support us. So, everything's been said, National Night Out went really well. These things, I think, are great, they're popular. I did want to say that, just so you know, we do not discuss the concept of smoking when we give these things out. We make no judgments. I notice people are a little bit reluctant to tell you if they smoke. I think it's not a popular thing to do these days, but we don't have any issues or judgments on any of that. We don't, we don't care. We may care, but we're certainly not going to make it obvious to anybody. And also to say that with our Butts Committee, it's such a nice grouping of community folks. Chief Tillie's with us, the police are with us, the Commissioners are with us, its Surf Riders with us. It's great. It's a lot of fun, and we're really, really enjoying it, and we hope that we will continue to do things that you find positive, and we welcome all your comments. And you know the meeting's tomorrow morning, and I think that's all I want to say, except on a separate note, I would like to note for the record that my little street was a beneficiary of wonderful drainage work that the town did some years ago. So, I know it works, and I'm appreciative of the fact that the town has put money into those project, projects over many years. I wanted to say that. We appreciate, it made a big difference. I guess that's it. Thank you very much.
Sue, please sit down. I did forget to mention that the fellow that made the banner is also going to make some stickers.
Yes, yes.
And give to the committee as well.
Yes, yes, and we, if no one has yet written him to thank him, I will do so.
I think that would be appropriate.
I think it would be appropriate, too. It's great, so.
Awesome.
Thank you for everything, and particularly the little item on the consent agenda. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, thank you. For all you do. Anyone else? All right, then, anybody else have anything? I think we would be ready to adjourn.
Second.
I'm over. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.